Going into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, section, chapter 30a, section 21a2 to conduct strategy in sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions and contract negotiations with non-union personnel for the town administrator and to review and approve the executive session minutes of November 4th, the 18th, December 2nd, and December 16th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, roll call vote, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. We'll be returning as closely as to 6:30 as possible.
Reopen the meeting of the Select Board of January 27th. Please rise and please remain standing after the salute to the flag.
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service personnel, both past and present, and both here and abroad. Okay, please be seated. All right. Sorry for the delay. I know people at home didn't entirely anticipating this meeting. First item on the agenda at 6:30, we have a hearing of the additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk, on the premises of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, Tilokberg Marketplace, LLC, Doom Business As, Farm and Coast Market, located at 79 Bridge Street. The hearing is open. For the proponent is the esteemed Esquire, Peter Bullitt.
Wow, what an introduction.
I think you have me confused with some other Peter Bullitt, but thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you all are aware that we had a home rule petition. It went through town hall, a town meeting, excuse me, and we've had terrific support from the Select Board, from town meeting, from Chris Markey and Mark Montigny. But there was a little hiccup with the initial petition. It referred to Section 17, and it really needs to be Section 15, and that's what has been approved up in Boston. And so we just need to make that amendment to properly reference Section 15 and not Section 17.
Board members have any questions on that? All right. Is there anybody in the audience who want to be heard in favor? Anybody in the audience who want to be heard against? All right, we're going to close the hearing. All right, board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
There are a second.
Second.
Okay. Just as a let everybody know, this meeting is being recorded for posterity, and all votes will be done verbally since we have all our members here. All right. So, on the motion, anybody have any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Got it?
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your help, everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next is we have the hearing for Eversource to install one new J.O. pole along Anderson Way, Dartmouth. This is to service the Mendy's house, if I'm not mistaken. All right, we'll open up the hearing. It is now open. All right, for Eversource, we have...
Someone new.
Thank you. My name's Marissa Jackson. I'm from the Rights and Permits Department at Eversource. What we're proposing this evening is the install of one midspan pole along Anderson Way. The purpose of this construction is to power up a new build for the Dartmouth Housing Authority. And that being said, I'd be more than happy to address any questions if there are any.
Okay. All right, board members have any questions? All right, anybody in the audience who want to be heard in favor of this? Anybody in the audience who want to be heard against this?
Question. Is there a timetable on the issue? Is it going to affect the project itself in terms of when it's going to be done?
Typically, once we receive the approval documentation from your office, we'll be out within 10 days.
10 days, okay. Got that note out there? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Make sure.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, we're going to close the hearing. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by... This is Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, none unanimous. All right, we're also going to take something out of order. We have an update on the Slocum Road gas line replacement status. And I believe we're going to have our... There he is.
And there's nothing in our package on this.
No. This is just a verbal update.
Yep.
Okay.
Reopen the meeting of the Select Board of January 27th. Please rise and please remain standing after the salute to the flag.
I, my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service personnel, both past and present, and both here and abroad. Okay, please be seated. All right. Sorry for the delay. I know people at home didn't entirely anticipating this meeting. First item on the agenda at 6:30, we have a hearing of the additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk. I like the way they have, on the premises of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, Tilokberg Marketplace LLC, doing business as Farm and Coast Market located at 79 Bridge Street. The hearing is open. For the proponent is the esteemed Esquire Peter Bullitt.
Wow, what an introduction.
I think you have me confused with some other Peter Bullitt, but thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You all are aware that we had a Home Rule petition. It went through Town Hall, a Town Meeting, excuse me. And we've had terrific support from the Select Board, from Town Meeting, from Chris Markey and Mark Montigny. But there was a little hiccup with the initial petition. It referred to Section 17, and it really needs to be Section 15. And that's what has been approved up in Boston. And so we just need to make that amendment to properly reference Section 15 and not Section 17.
Board members have any questions on that? All right. Is there anybody in the audience who want to be heard in favor? Anybody in the audience want to be heard against? All right, we're going to close the hearing. All right, board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
There are a second.
Second.
Okay. Just as a let everybody know, this meeting is being recorded for posterity, and all votes will be done verbally since we have all our members here. All right. So, on the motion, anybody have any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Got it?
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your help, everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next is we have the hearing for Eversource to install one new J.O. pole along Anderson Way, Dartmouth. This is to service the Mendy's house, if I'm not mistaken. All right, we'll open up the hearing. It is now open. All right, for Eversource, we have...
Someone new.
Thank you. My name's Marissa Jackson. I'm from the Rights and Permits Department at Eversource. What we're proposing this evening is the install of one mid-span pole along Anderson Way. The purpose of this construction is to power up a new build for the Dartmouth Housing Authority. And that being said, I'd be more than happy to address any questions if there are any.
Okay. All right, board members have any questions? All right, anybody in the audience want to be heard in favor of this? Anybody in the audience want to be heard against this?
Question. Is there a timetable? Is there a timetable on the issue? Is it going to affect the project itself in terms of when it's going to be done?
Typically, once we receive the approval documentation from your office, we'll be out within 10 days.
10 days, okay. Got that note out there? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Make sure.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, we're going to close the hearing. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? All right, we're also going to take something out of order. We have an update on the Slocum Road gas line replacement status. And I believe we're going to have our... There he is.
And there's nothing in our package on this.
E.F.G. H.
This is just a verbal update.
Yep.
Hi, it's Anthony Vellou, Community Relations for Eversource. So, we had recently met with some town officials, DPW. This is just a continuation where we left off from last year on the Slocum Road in Nimitz, Truman, Patton. So, we're going to start with that area first. That's going to be about three months. Then we're going to move over to Lexington, Huntington, Metropolitan. That should be about July. And then the finish off Slocum, the rest of the, it's about 800 to 1,000 feet to Route 6. That should be done right before Labor Day. And then we'll be done with that part of the, part of town.
Okay, so then, when, normally you do, you dig the trench, fill the trench, let it sit and settle. So, when we're looking at a final coat in all areas?
Typically six months. I'm not sure if, Tim, you have a schedule on that?
Six months would take us, if it's a September date, six months would take us right into February. So, I'm not seeing asphalt.
It'd be a year. It'd be one year.
So, so looking probably spring of 2026. Okay.
So, that repair is curb to curb?
There'll be, that section of Slocum, I have the schedule to be centerline to everything that is there.
Okay.
Unless we want to foot the building through the rest, which I don't see a need right now. We put so much money into that section of Slocum already, besides what they just doing.
But what about the side roads? I understand that for Slocum Road, but what about the side roads?
Side roads I have scheduled there.
Curb to curb.
They haven't been touched.
Thank you.
And we were on our radar anyways, for Eversource doing this work. So, we figured, push it up, like we know how we've been doing, following Eversource behind within a year or so. Like the last package, we just did the 30 roads this year, right behind.
All right.
One follow-up question. What about, and this is a different, this is the curb to curb from the previous Eversource project, which would be the roads down here, Evelyn, Gaywood, Pineapp. Anything that was disturbed, is that...
That's going to be put on the schedule for this one, those.
Okay, so that's happening this spring.
Six, depends what time of the year they finish, get at least one good seven this season. And that way too, we identify anything that residents have problems, and we try to fit them into correction ahead of time. So, actually this last package, they did, what, in the fall, last February, something like that. Round the corner, Richard Allen, stuff like that, would be fitted to schedule spring, early summer, like we did.
Thank you very much.
Try to get them, if they're part of a school area, there's been pretty too much chaos. Try to get them right at the last few bus stops.
All right, we'll have Tim in here in June giving us an update anyway, so.
Thank you.
Question? Mr. Talavon? The project around Truman Avenue, it's been kind of, I got a couple of calls from neighbors in that area. Is that, they've been kind of waiting for this to happen, for us to approve? And that's going to start right up, or what is it?
We're looking to start tomorrow. I know we're a little late, but we had met, and we're looking to start this as soon as possible, just so we can get out of here before, and then start Slocum in the summertime when there's no school in session, right? So, we can be out of there before school starts.
So, the fact that we're approving tonight, I can go forward?
Yep, the crew will be out there tomorrow saw cutting and prepping the streets.
Let's get out for you, and I make sure they're there.
Yeah, I got my yellow jacket. I got my yellow jacket. I can go out there.
Yeah.
All right, so, the hearings been, all right, well, this is just an update. Well, thank you for the update. Appreciate that.
Thanks again. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a hearing, the application to be received from Titanium Dartmouth Doing Business as Bliss Express located at 627 Dartmouth Street for a transfer of a year-round wine and malt beverage package license, store license, under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 138. All right, open up the hearing. Okay, and before us, we have the petitioner. Who is?
Mohammed Saleen.
How you doing?
Hi, I'm fine. How are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming in here. So, I just applied for a change of ownership for a beer and wine license for Bliss Express, 627 Dartmouth Street, South Dartmouth.
Okay, so you purchased, you purchased the, okay. All right, so just one quick question that I have on this. In the, in the application, your business hours, you have down for 5:00 a.m. to midnight, 12:00 a.m.?
Yes.
All right. The beer and wine is separate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If you could send us just a quick separate schedule for your beer and wine so that we just have it as part of the license, because I didn't see it on the license. Okay, just send that to Melanie?
Yes.
And that way we can make it part of, you know, the normal, normal beer and wine license hours.
It's always like that.
Right. Okay. All right, all right. So, does board have any questions? Okay, does anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor of this? Anybody in the audience wishes to be heard against this? Okay, close the hearing. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? All right, good luck, and welcome to Dartmouth.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our hearing. So, under new business, we have a constable appointment. John Calvin Barassa. Mr. Barassa.
There he is.
All right. So, you want to do this again, huh? Or is this a new license? Is this a renewal?
It's new. New, new.
You sure you want to do this?
Why not?
Okay.
Thanks for your little confidence.
Brother made me think about it. He's been doing it for three years, so.
Okay. All right. Board members have any questions? And Mr. Barassa?
So, I do. So, what is your experience, your past experience?
For, well, I've served. I mean, I'm a veteran. I've served a decade to go. So, I have somewhat experience. And my brother's been doing it for three years. He's helping me, you know, learn as well about the job and stuff.
Yep, yep.
So, I'm not, you know.
And your responsibilities, right.
But from talking to him, him telling me about it, and from what I've done in the past, it's kind of why I'm here. I figure I want to serve the community. I've served, you know, my country, and that's why I serve the community terrifically much.
Thank you.
Serve and duck occupation. Serve and duck occupation?
Jesus Christ.
All right. So, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. We also have, we have a reappointment of Patrick Duddy for constable. Mr. Duddy is not here, but this is a reappointment. We have no issues. Everything was approved.
Aye.
So, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Okay. Next item, we are doing Cheryl, right? Okay. We had a retirement in Town Hall, Cheryl Labrantes. She's the Assistant Treasurer. Cheryl has been with the town in this, in some, in the finance capacity for over 38 years. Cheryl cannot make it to Monday night meetings. But we do, the Select Board wishes to recognize the service from Cheryl in recognition of unceasing dedication to the town and the finance department for over 38 years, ending as Assistant Treasurer in for supporting Town Hall by serving on the Wellness Committee and Employee Appreciating Committee. I've known Cheryl for many, many years, and part of even serving on some of the committees, previous committees, worked with Cheryl. I can't say much about her, and the town is seriously, is totally going to miss her. So, if I know Gary will be able to get this to her, we'd greatly appreciate it. I just wish she was only here to that, to officially recognize it. So... Next.
Let me give her a round of applause in her representation.
Next, we have three individuals from the Highway Department totaling 115 years of service. I think maybe after working for the Highway Department all those years, they probably look like they're 115. But actually, they don't. They look pretty damn good, as far as I'm concerned.
Who's the oldest?
Each one, two of them have 38 years worth of service. One has 39. And Steve Mandonka is the senior at 39, so he was there first. Ronald Souza and David Souza each have 38 years. They are retiring, or have retired, from the Highway Department. And that just leaves this giant void of knowledge that these gentlemen have had. But I do know that Paul and Derek and Tim have their cell phone numbers on speed dial. And I know if there's anything that comes up, I know these gentlemen will come and assist us as much as possible. So...
Can we bring them up?
Each one has pretty much said, this is an official citation, to be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Stephen Mandonka, to Ronald Souza, to David Souza, in recognition of their unceasing commitment to ensuring the safety and the integrity of the town's roads for 39, 38 years in the Highway Department, and for their dedication during storm emergencies. The most important part of this job during the wintertime is these guys leaving their homes, leaving their driveways, snow-covered, to take care of our town roads, only to come back being in a truck plowing, which isn't an easy job. It wears on the body. Then to come home and shovel their own stuff. So, that's, to me, is tantamount. So, with that...
Bring them up individually?
Yes. Stephen is here. Come on up, Stephen. Stephen, thank you very much for everything that you've done for the town. We appreciate it. And we only wish you the best in, but keep that cell phone handy.
We'll get somebody to plow your driveway.
Keep that cell phone handy.
She doesn't get paid for it. Next.
I want to say that one for later. David Souza. David, 38 years for the town. All right there.
How good does it feel now?
Thank you very much for your...
Good for you.
I'll look quite away, man, before we do. Is everything okay with him? The honeydew list just grew, right?
Thank you so much.
Your wife says she wants you to re-enlist.
She's got a list this long.
And then what we have, then what we have is the unofficial ambassador to the DPW. Anybody who just goes to the DPW, ever goes to the yards, this is the guy everybody sees. And if it wasn't, I know before it was always the Vajri, but now it's Souza, so.
He knows where all the skeletons are.
Appreciate it, Ronnie. Thank you very much for your service.
All right, where are they?
Thank you so much. Well, we still have a landfill over there, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow, nice.
Nice.
Big smile.
Very nice.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great job, guys.
Thank you, guys. To recognize these guys and what they've done, and how's your kid start with these guys?
They deserve it.
To them, you're still the kid, Derek. That's the best thing. Now that they're gone, you know what happens? The kids have to look at you.
Oh, God.
You know, the thing is, is that, you know, generally, you know, working for, working for any municipality isn't the easiest thing. Sometimes the accolades are very far and few between. But the people who have been here the longest and been in positions such as ours and recognize damn good work when it happens. And we know, we appreciate and defend the work that happens. And I can say in all honesty, you know, we have our bumps, we have our bruises, but goddamn do we have a very good employees around here. And dedication, you don't, you don't stick around in the same job 38, 39 years because you're doing it for, just for the cash. No. There's, there is some love in the job. There is some dedication into the job. And there is some fulfillment in making, you know, knowing that the work that you do does make a difference. And we recognize that. So, thank you very much.
There you go, Sean.
Thanks, guys.
And they don't make them like they used to. So, thank you very much. Yes, 80/20.
Thank you. Good night.
And we're alone.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have the Russell Mills Historic District Committee appointments. We have Janet Stanton and Andrew K. Spongebird.
Spawnberg.
Spawnberg.
Dr. Spawnberg.
I think I went to him once or twice.
You might have.
All right, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Okay, we'll send them out letters so that they can get sworn in and get going. All right, we have pathway committees reappointments. We have Sarah LaBossier and Bill Trimble, William Trimble. Let me get official.
Is it three people?
Board's pleasure?
Two people. Motion to approve.
Two brothers, yeah, Bill and William.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? All right, we have a resignation from the DP, Board of Public Works, Richard Alves. I believe, yeah, he's been there for eight years. I understand and appreciate the work, so if we can get out a letter of thank you to Mr. Alves for his service, it'd be greatly appreciated. We need a motion to accept the resignation.
Motion to accept resignation.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Okay, next, we have the Mass Trails Grant Letter of Support to the Northern Scenic Greenway Projects.
So, Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you have the, you know, as you remember, we did one of these about two, month ago, month and a half ago. This is for grant opportunities that they're seeking and just asking the board for their support. This is a letter I drafted for the board's approval to send on to them.
Okay. Board's pleasure?
Our motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Okay. Next is, we have the Human Resources Director's search update.
We skipped one?
Uh, no.
Oh, Mass DEP monitor site request. Yes, map 25-084. All right, so what do we got?
So, Mr. Chairman, we had received correspondence from Mass DEP here a couple of weeks ago from their water shed planning program. They reached out to us to inquire about going on to one of our properties to go to the Pascomant Set to do some water quality sampling as part of their upcoming rounds. I did have a conversation with Chris Mishad, because I know that he also has talked to the board about doing his own set of testing. He's in support of them coming to Dartmouth, just adding that contingency or the condition on there that they work through his office to coordinate their scheduling on-site. He notes that it may be difficult for them to traverse back there, so he just wants to assist them with that process. But he saw no problems with this request.
As long as their, you know, staff is okay with it, I don't have a problem with it. Board's pleasure, any questions from the board?
So, my question is, this is all Dartmouth-owned lands?
So, this particular site is owned by the town of Dartmouth?
And they will be able to get to, I couldn't really figure it out, can they get to it through Dartmouth-owned lands? Or are they going to have to go on to any private parcels? through Dartmouth-owned lands, or are they going to have to go on to any private parcels?
So, that's something where I imagine Chris Mishad would be able to assist them. He has not had that conversation about timing, or where they're going to go in terms of an access point, but I imagine that would be a conversation following this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's ways to get back there. I'm either from Chase Road or from Tucker Road, so... And even from the well site, because if I'm not mistaken, the well site does go, is further south, but all that land is still town-owned land, so... All right.
A hike into the woods.
This postcard, any condition, the condition will be added on here that go through our Board of Chris Mishad?
That's correct.
My understanding of this is that the D E P is doing, they've chosen random locations all over the state, and they're trying to put together some kind of a study and consensus. And this is chosen by them for whatever reason they chose.
Why not? As long as the staff is okay with it, like I said. Anything else? Board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion for us to support this project.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks to allow, to grant permission to Mass D E P. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. O'Neil. All right, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous.
Four zero.
Yep, four zero. Mr. Mickelson stepped out. Human Resources Director's Search Update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, over the last month, you know, we did post the Human Resources Director job internally to see the applications. From our last meeting, we had a separate Human Resources Director Screening Committee meeting, where we reviewed and considered those applications. After review, it was the committee's recommendation that they did want to post the job externally, you know, based on that review. So, you know, with the board's approval after tonight, what we'd like to do is take the job posting and get that posted on to the various sites, including our town website and our typical places that we do post the position. You know, that timeline will most likely extend for at least thirty days, is how long we anticipate having that out. So I think that's the first thing, and then I suppose the next discussion will be under Agenda I M L.
Okay, so, board needs to make a decision as to whether we need to post this externally. So, is there a motion, or is there a discussion, actually? No discussion, do I have a motion?
Motion to post the position of H R Director externally.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. O'Neil on the motion.
Can we just fill in Mr. Mickelson?
We'll iterate from Mr. Mickelson.
Yep, we're voting on the, yep, the external posting.
Yep, yep.
All right, any questions on that, on the motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. All right, so now we have discussion about an interim Human Resources Director.
Yes. So with the job going to be posted externally, we do realize that there is going to be a bit of time between when we start to advertise, to conducting the interviews, to ultimately onboarding our new Human Resources Director. Now, as part of our transition process, we have worked with our benefits coordinator, Melissa, to offer her above grade, to do some of the functions of the H R Director. However, you know, it's our determination that there will be additional support needed within that department, you know, during this advertising process. From our last meeting, we talked about the different options to build out that capacity in the short term, but after review, it would be our recommendation that we appoint an interim H R Director. Now, we have made contact with a couple of different firms, individuals, about what that may look like. But what I would be asking for tonight is the board's approval to move forward with those discussions, with the idea of coming up with a proposal here at an upcoming meeting for the board's consideration and vote on the matter. It would be structured as a employee, a temporary employee with the town, so it would be something that the board would be able to, under this proposal, interview the individual, ask questions of the individual, and we would, at a later date, have a contract for however long we anticipate having that individual service the town.
All right, is there any possibility of maybe doing it as a consultant versus a temporary employee?
So, there are firms out there who do provide those services. Unfortunately, I have not heard back from the firms that have been referred to me to date. Now, similar to the challenge that we face with the Planning Director opening, we are capped for consultants at ten thousand dollars. Now, you know, certainly, our hope is that we'd have a position filled, so that we would not come near that cap. However, you know, if it was a temporary employee, it would offer the town a little bit more flexibility and capacity for the various projects that we anticipate having them involved with in the coming months. So, I don't know if the ten thousand dollars will go faster than, you know, for the Planning Director, who we only had that individual service the town for a few hours a week. It wasn't something, they weren't as intensive in their roles, we were able to absorb a lot of functions.
But you will be reviewing both possibilities and reporting back to us as to what you want to do.
So, at this point, my recommendation here tonight would be to move forward with the appointment of an interim Human Resources Director. However, you know, if the board wants us to go down the avenue of a consultant instead, I'm happy to continue those conversations and have a proposal at a future meeting.
Okay. Board members?
That being said, as a member of the H R screening team and discussing the H R Department's needs, we did feel that hiring an interim individual with a set number of hours per week focused on the specific tasks that we need done would serve our purposes in the short term.
Ms. Brooks, what kind of timetable are we talking about there to find this individual?
Actually, we have had recommendations from our Labor Council, Janet Friedman, of someone she's worked, a retired person that she's worked with before, that we'd like to pursue.
Is that pretty realistic?
Yes.
Because, isn't it, I mean, we should move on this as quick as possible, because we've already been...
Yes, there are some things, because there are some aspects of the H R job that, as we said, Melissa Jerome is able to do. There are some aspects of the job that Melanie Perry currently does, but there are some aspects that nobody's doing, and we need those to be done. And this is a retired H R person who would be very familiar with the jobs.
Is it possible that if this doesn't work, we'll know fairly soon whether this person can come on or not?
Yes. Once we approve it, Mr. Vitale will be reaching out and having that discussion.
Now, let's assume, within a week, this person says yes. We need to wait until a meeting, our meeting, to say yes after that.
That's, yeah, we meet again in two weeks.
Yeah, we're meeting again in two weeks.
So that's why we would like him to be able to look at this.
Is it, is there a chance that we can obviously find out as soon as we can whether this person will work, so maybe there's another person of the same type, so we can still have, in two weeks, someone?
Well, all we would be granting is, right now, with our motion, would be for Mr. Vitale to secure someone.
Yep.
Now, I'm telling you of someone that we know of. It may be somebody else. Mr. Vitale might contact this person, and this person say, "I actually can't do it, but here's a name." So, we're giving him two weeks to find us a body.
So, whether it be this person or someone else, the goal is to have someone here in two weeks if we can.
Yep. By our February tenth meeting.
I think we're under the gun to get that done, and I know it may be hard, but it's pretty critical. So, we set ourselves, not only unanswered issues, but maybe some legal issues, ought to have someone in who's competent, stating the obvious. Great. That's the best, someone.
And so, tonight, we would, you know, we need to finish this, but we would be looking for this interim person. We're also going to be posting it externally, so we're talking about getting that also moving, and hopefully, within a month from now, we may even be ready to move into the process of interviewing and...
Full-time.
Does it take that long?
Well, because if we just get it out, we just, yeah.
All the more reason we can find someone in two weeks.
As soon as we can.
I take it, we posted, we did move on it. We moved on it to find an internal candidate. The internal candidates didn't pan out.
Which we reviewed.
And they were interviewed, but it didn't pan out. So, I mean, we've gone through the, you know, we've gone through the process. This is another step in the process. So, with that, I would need a motion to...
I was going to say that, Sean, we've already actually started the process.
Right.
So, internally, now externally, in tandem, you know, trying to find some common area for this very qualified candidate.
So, what we would need is a motion to authorize the interim town administrators to move forward, to get an interim H R Director.
Some...
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Okay, interim town administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, held its annual conference in Boston at the Seaport Convention Center on January twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. This year, the conference was themed Connect Three Fifty-One. It included a range of informative and timely workshops, guest speakers, including Massachusetts Governor, who spoke on a few topics, including transportation infrastructure reform and the allocation of more dollars in FY twenty-six budget to address the needs of cities and towns across the Commonwealth, dedicating more dollars to local roads. The convention also included the general business meeting, discussing policy, and the annual trade show featuring the latest services and solutions for cities and towns across Massachusetts. Also, the town, just as had its Moody's rating reaffirmed, double-A two on one twenty-four, twenty-five. As the bond, as the board recalls, the town had its standard and poor's rating of triple-A reaffirmed last year. Moody's rating of double-A two is a credit rating of fixed income securities, indicates high quality and very low credit risk. It is the third highest long-term credit rating that Moody's assigns. Moody's utilizes key indicators and metrics, such as the town's financial performance, including indicators such as debt ratio and the town's stabilization balance, and that's all they have.
That's great news. That's really good news, especially now. All right, anybody have any questions on the update? Okay. All right, old business. Bliss Corner, anything?
No.
Frozen Lake Nokochok, anything?
No updates.
Municipal Broadman?
No, no updates.
Mass D E P Title Five Amendments?
No, no updates.
All right, so next, we have the minutes of January sixth and January ninth. All right, board members, have any questions on those minutes?
I reviewed both the January sixth and January ninth minutes and found them to be accurate.
Okay, so is that a motion to approve?
Motion to approve both January ninth and January sixth.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. Wait again, in the minutes, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Thank you.
Motion, any questions?
I was here.
All those in favor, say aye.
I was here.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. All right, Select Board Updates. Anybody have anything? We'll start with Mr. Tattlebaum.
Okay. We reported a couple, few, two meetings back, that we had a productive meeting with the area C S O issue held at the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Mark Rasmussen was kind enough to take the, take charge and organize the meeting. And we had engineers from the city in New Bedford, and we had representatives from Matapoisett, Fayhaven, and Dartmouth, and I went along with Rob Almy and Tim Barber from our DPW. We agreed, first and foremost, we're going to meet again, and this next meeting will be, what we're trying to do is expand the regionalism of the issue, and we will include our congressional, we're going to invite a federal congressional, the U S Rep Congressman, Mr. Keating, and of course, locals, Chris Markey, who was very much in favor, and Senator Mark Digney. We'll meet again, and the idea is to regionalize the issue. In addition, Mark Rasmussen from the Buzzards Bay Coalition put together a presentation for the swimmers when they had to cancel the fundraiser over the summer, because the water was unswimmable. And he's putting together a reduced presentation, which I would like to then bring to this board, along with others, to make it, to try to understand that the city in New Bedford actually is doing quite a bit, but we need to make it a more regional issue as far as the C S O is concerned, the combined sewer overflow. So, I think that we're trying to build a case to regionalize it, to get more people interested, and try to speed the process. The city in New Bedford's spending a hundred to two hundred million dollars a year, maybe a hundred, fifty million, but it's a one-billion-dollar problem that's been going on for about forty years. I swam in that water as a kid and explained some of the issues I've been having, so I didn't know it was that bad. As a, also, as far as regionalized, we're meeting with John Borogod and his staff from the Crepo landfill, to try to look at the issue of what they're doing, and try to regionalize that issue, and certainly look at recycling from the city to further extend the life of the landfill beyond adding more space, which there is available, but also a little bit more recycling will go a long, long way to extend it. So we're meeting with him as well. So, I think we're getting some nice feedback, and I have to say that the city, considering the financial issues the city faces, I think that they've not only been cooperative, but they're doing a lot that people don't know about, and the issue is to let people, our people, know what it is, and try to help and make it more regional in terms of solutions.
Well, municipal government has a tendency not to toot their own horns, and sometimes what we're doing sometimes doesn't get out there. So, I'm not surprised, you know?
I think the presentation is fascinating, and I think it'll be great to show, and we'll invite our DPW people in an upcoming meeting.
Sounds good, thank you. Mr. O'Neil, you have anything?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to get back on the radar for a couple of different things. One of them is a matter that affects the DPW, DPW Board, and kind of alerted me again to the issue that they're having with Mr. Alves' resignation. You know, a couple of years ago, on the Charter Review Commission, there was a discussion about the DPW Board and the number of members. And, you know, we floated the idea out, I have to a bunch of people to discuss the board makeup, and I felt at the time that it was, it's a difficult board to communicate, when it comes to communication between the actual members, because it's only a three-member board. And, you know, I've talked to David about it, I've talked to Rob Almy about it. You know, I know that the other board member of the DPW is in favor of a move from three members to five. It will require a change to the charter, because it specifically spells out the three-member board. But the problem that they have is considerable. You know, when the members of the DPW Board are asked to visit, say, a site location to talk about any particular issue that they're having in the field, they can't do that now. They can't have two members get together and, you know, try and figure out the answer to any specific problem in the field. They can't get on the phone and discuss business because of the open meeting law, and that's a problem. You know, it's one of the largest boards that we have in the town, one of the largest departments, I should say, very capable members on it, but I think it really does cause a problem for them, even on vacation, sick time, and things like that. We're going to start to see delays. I know that we have a couple of people that are interested in the open seat right now, that Mr. Alves is vacating as of February. So, I'd like, I just wanted to get it back on the radar. I'm not here to make a motion on it. I wanted the members to have an opportunity to suss it out themselves and get a feel from the people that they speak with, but I think you'll find that it's, it'll be well-received in the department and on the board also, and it's going to require us to make a motion that they, maybe a recommendation to the Charter Review Committee to put it on the warrant.
I think what we'll do is, we will have that discussion at our next meeting.
Okay.
So that we can sponsor an article directly. We don't need to go to the Charter Commission for this. We can do that directly. Select Board has the authority to go to... Select board has the authority to go, to make changes in the charter. Unfortunately, it has to be approved by town meeting. So, we can sponsor an article to change the number.
And on that note, Mr. Chairman, you know, we have been contacted about other issues. I know leases is one of them in terms of duration, so there are going to be a list of things that both Gary and I are keeping a tab of for this upcoming town meeting that we'll prepare a list for, so that the board can discuss them and
Right.
...move forward on those different items.
Yeah, because, I mean, even if town meeting, you know, approves the number change, I'm not mistaken, it would still have to go to, it would still have to go to the voters, you know?
Yes.
In, for next April.
I wanted to, I wanted to...
So, it wouldn't happen until April 2026.
Right, right, but I wanted to give the board an opportunity also to come forward.
But there may be a mechanism where we make the five-member appointment, and we, and they appoint, and they can sit in.
Yeah, that would be great.
We'll see what happens.
Commander say that at the time, the board, the DPW board was not in favor of moving anything, because they were having this efficiency study done, which we haven't heard any results. Is it possible to bring members of the board forward to present to us the results of the efficiency study?
Is it complete?
It is not the last time we talked.
I can add, I can add, still working at that, but I also had my most recent conversation with Rob Almy, and that they brought that up at the last meeting with Al still there. There's unanimous support to go from three to five on that board. I think that they're working that efficiency study, and Ms. Brooks said it's slow coming, but I would...
Well, my frustration is that we could have gone through with this, but they held it off of the efficiency study, and now they're seeing the error of their ways.
Yeah, it's okay. I get it, but I would think, from my point of view, adding, that we should do everything we can to make sure it's on that town, on the articles for this coming town meeting.
Yeah, and invite them, at least, you know, I'd like to have their input publicly. That's great if they did in the meeting, then that's a public meeting. Second thing, Sean, is, you know, still hearing from the private sector about some of the issues in the development area, and a lot of these, a lot of these issues, they're brought on by themselves in some cases, but in others, they run into, they run into time issues within the different departments. And I know that we brought on a new building inspector, who, from everything that I can see, is doing a good job, cleaned up quite a bit in the building department. I'd like to get an update from him. I'm also hearing a lot of complaints from the private sector and also the public sector, employees of the town. I had a chance to talk to Tim Barber about this particular issue. I would like to get more feedback from Paul, Paul Duat. It's about the waste, the stormwater management bylaw, and I talked to the planning director about it, chairman of the planning board, and there seems to be this undercurrent of a desire to make this bylaw a little bit more consumer-friendly on certain projects, not all projects, not large, vast developments. You know, there are things that we need to protect in the town, and I get that, and they're concerned about those also, but there are smaller retro projects in town that they run into a lot of problems with the way that the stormwater management bylaw is written. It's a little too strict. It goes across all projects, and there's some, there's some interest by those parties that have to deal with this bylaw all the time, to do something about it that makes a lot of sense for their departments. You know, I know that Paul Duat's constantly running up against this stormwater bylaw, and he's doing his job by protecting the town to the letter of the law. However, he's hearing, he's hearing a lot about it, and, you know, it's unfair to send Paul, in my opinion, out on job sites where, you know, you get berated because of what the bylaw says, and he's just trying to do his job. You know, they're, so, I've got a little bit, I've got some interest in, from the DPW, from the planning office, and definitely from the private sector. They're spending a lot of money, a lot of time, when I think we could, we could not jettison the whole thing for certain projects, but make changes to that that makes sense. So, I was thinking of, you know, the issues that we have with the building department, what we've cleaned up, trying to get some kind of public hearing together where we could have a representative of the development side, bring some of these issues to light, where they could explain what they're running into, have the DPW explain exactly what they're running into on their side, and try and come to a meeting of the minds where we can make this bylaw and these regulations a little bit more palatable for everybody involved.
So, the question, the question that I have is, who was the originator of the stormwater bylaw in the first place? Is it the DPW?
I think it's drawn from state, I think it's drawn from state law, and then Tim was explaining a little bit about it to me today, that there are sections of the state law that we have to abide by, but there, in our, in our town bylaw, we do have some leeway on certain projects, and that's really what I'm trying to get them to focus on.
Jim, could I suggest that we have a joint meeting with planning and DPW, just to find out what the problem is, and if it requires more work and more public input or additional meetings, we can then set the tone going forward and have both those departments here, and it'll be, maybe not as a public forum, well, it could be a public forum too, but I think it's going to require more than that just one effort.
I think, I think what we need, I think what we need to do at this time beside, eventually we'll get to that point, but I think what we need to do is, we need to have Gary and Chris sit down with Tim, and Dan, and Paul, and whoever else needs to be brought in, to figure out what needs to be done, and that way, at least, they can start the process to figure out, you know, what can and cannot be done, and at what level.
But on the other hand, if you hear the issues from those two departments...
Well, at least if we get that first, and then we can meet with the other departments.
I'd like to hear from them first, and then set the tables to what has to be done going forward, because...
I think it's not just those two departments.
Yeah.
I think it's Tim, Randy, Dan, Mark Garrett.
Right.
I mean, I think that it's a bigger, I think there needs to be a department head, those department heads come together and get it all on the table.
Have that discussion.
And then bring that information to us.
Yeah. On that note, so, this is the first I'm hearing about this concern, but, you know, certainly if the board were to refer it to Gary and I, and we can meet with the applicable departments, to start having a conversation, because I'm sure even individually, these departments may have their own commentary or legwork on what they would change if they could. So, getting a meeting of the minds together and then coming back to the board with a recommendation. Now, I don't know how long that might take, however, if we start those conversations now, this may even be something that we could pursue for the annual town meeting in June.
I've actually asked them to start thinking about these things, because, you know, my conversation with Dan was, was interesting. You know, I brought up, you know, were I on the stormwater management bylaw, and he said, "Well, you know, some of the projects, you know, certain levels of the projects, you know, we could give them a little leeway here and make it faster, and it wouldn't be so expensive for them," and, you know, but, you know, the bylaw is the bylaw. And then we had a conversation about, okay, if you could change it, what would you change about it? And he had all kinds of ideas. I said, "That's what I'd like. That's what I want to hear, like the ideas for changing something that makes sense for all involved," because the other side of it is, the DPW guys can't keep getting bashed out in the public because they're doing their job, and we really need to, it's been on the books long enough to warrant a review, in my opinion, and the private sector has basically had enough of certain...
I would agree with this informal meeting, but the sooner we get people in front of us
Yeah.
...who can help us make a decision and get our opinion out, I think is much more productive.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want to have, you know, 20 people here screaming about their individual situations. What I'd like to do is, I have somebody in particular in the private sector that could be a conduit, say, for the private sector, and say, you know, these are the issues that, you know, everybody seems to, instead of having 10 people talk about the same issue, have one person discuss the issues that are affecting all of them and see what we can do after, and then by that time, maybe DPW and planning internally have some ideas that they can bring to the table, but something's going to change.
Dan has approached me on a couple of items, not only that, but a few of the other. You know, it's a fresh set of eyes now in the department, so he's looking at a lot of things that he could change, also with the charity bonds, he's come up with a lot of different things, so I think, I'm actually going to meet with him tomorrow just on proposals, so, but I think it's a good...
Yeah, and Chris and I have talked about, you know, just recently, the application process, the online permit, you know, educating people, and, you know, we're not in the business to have to stay on people in this process, I get that, but, you know, they need to be educated right out of the gate, I think, and what can we do to kind of foster that, get them on a good path, so the departments aren't waiting for information, and things stall, and, you know, I think we're almost there. We've got Randy in a good spot, I think. I think he brings a lot of good energy to the, to the topic, and guys at DPW are ready to talk about some of these things, so, and the public is more than, more than ready to talk about efficiencies at this stage.
Well, I can also tell you that as far as stormwater is concerned, there's nothing that affects the, because the sewer overflow in Clark's Cove, then stormwater.
More than that, yeah.
Because they mix that with the sewer overflow, and that's what the problem is.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a giant problem down there.
Thank you, Sean.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to say that I do think our best start is with Chris and Gary to meet with Tim, Randy, Dan, and Mark, to get some, what are their issues from their department, what's their lens, what's their hangup, and if we could get feedback at our next meeting, I think then we will know whether or not, because once we say we want to have a public meeting, you know, you may say that there's one, there's one person that could speak to them, but, you know, I have found that not everybody...
One of the things I want, I would like to see is, is at least have the town departments meet to get at least an idea of where they want to go with this, and then bring in, you know, somebody from the outside, just to discuss on some of the perceptions that they have, you know, to, you know, so I think that, and then finally come to us, you know, with, with pretty much, you know, a plan, you know.
If there's anything that we want to try to possibly get into June town meeting, we've got about a month.
Right.
Anything, small or large, that's all we have.
And if it doesn't, and if it doesn't, and if it doesn't get to June, then we have, you know, the October to...
I understand that, but if there is anything...
I'd like this meeting to happen in advance, so on February 10th, we would have a report out.
Right. Okay. Anything else, Ms. O'Neill?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brooks?
I just wanted to, I also attended the MMA workshop, and I'm sure I will be flooding your inboxes soon with information that I...
Can't wait.
I know, you love that. But one of the things that was discussed is the 250th anniversary of sort of the Revolutionary War in Massachusetts, and they have asked all towns and cities to look back at their history books and find out if you did have any action in your community, and let's take advantage of that, and we did, so...
We had the burning up Payne Now.
Exactly, so it's something that I'm going to be talking with a couple of groups in town about documenting it and getting some more information about that, so we can secure our place in history.
Yes, definitely so.
Okay, and then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that our Dartmouth outreach team, this Wednesday, is going to do the PIT count, which is the point in time, and that's a count of our unhoused population. They have three different times where they're going to be going out, 8:30 a.m., 2:30 p.m., and 6:30 p.m., and they know the locations that we're going to go out and count who is there. This is something that actually happens nationwide. This date in January is a date that the state has selected, so hoping for mild weather on Wednesday.
Hopefully, the low numbers, but not counting.
So, I will keep you posted
Not expecting...
...at a, at our next meeting.
All right. Anybody have anything else? All right, I have nothing. I'm actually completely blank. So, Mr. Tattelbaum, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Something you wanted to say?
No, I have nothing.
Oh, you have nothing? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill. Motion made by Mr. Tattelbaum, seconded by Ms. O'Neill. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous.